Hello, everyone. We will begin in just a minute. I know we're a couple minutes late.
Look, I have one of these.
All right, are we almost there? Just waiting for my thing to open here. All right, are we all ready? All right, I will call the meeting to order if we would all rise for the flag salute.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would we all remain standing in observance of Veterans' Day in honor of all those serving here and abroad, and also in honor of the three community members that we lost in the last week, three young men. Thank you. All right, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting and the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 8th, 2024. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the Municipal Building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January 9th, 2024 and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 9th, 2024. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. And we'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Vigara?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Ozillo?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
I am here. And I will actually take a motion to quickly recess into closed session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, be resolved that the board meet in closed session for the purpose of discussing confidential pupil matters. Be further resolved that the matters discussed in closed session be discussed to the public, be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We are now in closed session. We will not be that long, I promise. All right, are we all back? All right, I will call us back into session and we'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Shonan.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Vigara?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mr. Ozillo?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
I am here. And we will take an approval, a motion to approve the minutes for 3.1 and 3.2. I see, Ms. Fenton, we'll take you for approval of the minutes.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, October 28th, 3.1 to 3.2.
Second.
Any questions or discussions from the board? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Aquino?
Abstain on both.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Vigara?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil? Mr. Ozillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
And yes. And do we have any communications or petitions for the board, superintendent, members of the board? Do you have anything?
No.
No? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to reports. And we'll start with the superintendent's report.
I have the honor of introducing our fabulous junior ROTC cadets who are going to be talking about their state of their union for this year. So come on up, team.
All right, good evening. On behalf of our Mount Olive High School's AFTRC, we would like to thank you for allowing us to speak to you today. Now, before we begin, I'd like to introduce myself and my team. My name is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Noah Lopez, and I'm this year's unit commander.
My name is Major Yellos, and I'm this year's Director of Operations.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Klinka, and I'm this year's superintendent.
I'm Cadet Captain Magison, and I'm this year's Director of Cyber.
I'm Cadet Captain Doyle, and I'm this year's Director of Personnel.
I'm Cadet Captain Petashin, and I'm this year's Director of Community Services.
I'm Cadet Captain Kurwa, and I'm this year's Director of Police.
I'm Cadet Captain Velez, I'm this year's Director of Public Forces.
I'm Cadet Captain Ona, and I'm this year's Director of Public Forces.
So now, as you can see on this slide, here's a brief overview of all the topics we'll be discussing in today's presentation. So last year, so as you saw in our overview, last year we were able to come up with a great set of cadet impact goals. Some of the goals I'd like to highlight to you are our cumulative GPA goal, where we were able to set a goal for 3.3 cumulative GPA, and we were able to greatly exceed this goal with an average GPA of 3.456 cumulative GPA across the entire cadet corps. Another cadet goal I'd like to highlight is our LDR slash extracurricular participation. We set a goal last year to have the cadet corps, at least 75% of our cadet corps, participate in an LDR. As you can see, we were able to greatly exceed this goal with 75% of our cadet corps participating in any extracurricular we offer. In addition to that, I'd also like to highlight, too, our average uniform score goal. Last year, we set a goal to have an average uniform score per cadet of 8.5 for the first semester and 8.5 for the second semester. As you can see, once again, we also heavily exceeded this goal with a 9.3 average uniform score across the entire cadet corps. Up next, we have Cadet Major Yerda. So on the board here are our school impact goals. One goal I would really like to highlight is our recruitment and retention goal, in which we set out to recruit a total of 45 new cadets, as well as obtain a 90% retention rate. I am very proud to announce that we far exceeded this goal, setting a new record even for our unit, recruiting a total of 60 new cadets, as well as obtaining a 93% retention rate, excuse me. I'm proud to announce that this officially got us above our 100 cadet minimum requirement for our entire unit in terms of cadets. Up next is Cadet First Lieutenant Klinka.
All right, here we have this previous year's community impact goals. So last year, we set a goal of 900 community service hours, and we greatly exceeded this goal with over 1,439 community service hours, which is way more than any of us could have expected when we set these goals at the beginning of a year in our leadership workshop. We also had a goal for a 65% participation rate in at least two community service events, and we greatly exceeded this goal as well with 75%. So it's great to see that our cadets are coming out and helping to serve their community. Next up, we have Cadet Captain Magison.
As you see here, our past year's accomplishments, I'd specifically like to highlight the fact that we were able to send 19 cadets down to a McGuire Air Force Base for the Cadet Leadership Course, which is around a week's stay where cadets are developing and working on their leadership capabilities. And then last year was also our first ever partnership with Operation Jersey Cares, where we collected and packaged supplies and sent them over to our active duty members. And next up is Cadet Major Yerda.
So before our school year started during the summer, the entire leadership team got together from the 19th to 21st of August for our annual leadership workshop meetings. During this meeting, we got together and we went over our future plans for the year, really just getting a head start before school starts. We went over our requirements sent out from headquarters, making sure all of our future goals and our plans are within the requirements, as well as preparing our entire team to boost our morale and mostly prepare for our cadet orientation that we held a few days after. Up next is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Lopez. So as Cadet Yerda mentioned, during our leadership workshop, we were able to come up with this year's 2024-2025 cadet goals. As you can see here, we have a list of a lot of great goals. As you can see, some of them are quite similar to the goals we had from last year, with some adjustments. One of the goals I'd like to highlight is the one at the bottom, which is our fitness goal. So we set this goal for 20% of the cadet corps to achieve a 75 percentile or above on health and wellness PFT. This, every year, we hold two personal fitness tests per cadet. This is to ensure, just to see how well each cadet has improved in their physical fitness over the course of the year. In addition to that, we also have, we also have another list of goals here. One of some more I'd like to highlight is our school appreciation event goal. This year, we plan to hold eight school appreciation events. So our appreciation committee, led by Cadet Captain Zatchny, gives back to our, gives back to our schools faculty and staff members for all the hard work they've done to make our school great. So this committee makes posters and provides little gifts to each faculty member as a little thank you for making, doing all the best they can to make our school amazing. In addition to that, I'd also like to highlight to you the bottom goal, which is our recruitment event goal. We plan to have cadet corps will hold five recruitment events consisting of at least one school-wide showcase event. So last year and previous years, we were able to showcase all the aspects of our unit to the rest of the school. Last year, we were able to have the privilege of doing a drill sequence and exhibition sequence during the winter pep rally. This year, we plan to do something quite similar and just to showcase all the interesting aspects that our program has to offer. Up next, we have Cadet Major Yerda. Oh, sorry, we have Cadet Captain Doyle with recruitment.
So I am pleased to tell you all that we have, that starting this year, we have far exceeded our 100 cadet minimum by recruiting 60 new cadets this year. Now pair that with the 69 cadets that have returned from the previous year, we now stand at 129 cadets. Now, since recruitment was so successful, we're going to do the exact same game plan as last year, and we project to do the same, if not even better, for the 2025 to 2026 school year for recruitment. Now for retention, we have 107 total cadets who are eligible to return next year, and assuming a goal of 85% retention rate, that would mean we keep 91 cadets. Next up is Cadet Captain Zatchny.
After seeing the amount of community service hours that we were able to achieve last year, we decided to bump that number up to 1,650 community service hours. And additionally, this year, we have a unique opportunity to accept community service hours from outside of our organization. That means that any cadet who is in a community service-based organization outside of our program, as well as our national honor societies that the high school has to offer, they can go ahead and fill out a form, and we will go ahead and we can add those to our hours. And because of this unique opportunity, we hope to get an additional 50 community service hours. Next up is Cadet First Lieutenant Klinka.
All right, so one of the things previously mentioned on our cadet impact goals were morale events. We set a goal this year to have five morale events. You can see some of them there from the pictures, and some of them listed. Our most recently, we had a movie night on October 18th, and shortly, we will have a holiday party, which will be on December 13th. And these events are a great way for cadets who might be in different classes, they will be able to come together, enjoy each other's company, and is also a great opportunity for our cadets in Roxbury to come together and meet some of the other people who are in Mount Olive. And it's a great way to build morale as a unit. Next up, we will have Cadet Captain Kurwa.
So right after our leadership workshop, we held a two-day event for all of the first-year cadets coming in. This year, we had 23 out of the 60 cadets come into our cadet enrichment program. And essentially, what it is, is a two-day program where the first day will go over unit basics. We'll go over our unit, like our unit, sorry, general knowledge about the unit. We'll also go over uniform requirements and what we expect them to learn when they get into the unit. And then our second day will have a modified PT day, and they'll have a little bit of drill instruction to get them used to what we do throughout the unit. And what we hope to gain from this is we have the cadets go back to the unit once the school year starts, and then they'll be able to teach their classmates if they have any difficulties, anything they learned throughout the summer. Up next, we have Cadet Captain Velez with our extracurriculars.
Okay, so in our program, we have many extracurriculars, as you can see in the base tiers on the slide in front of you. There are currently, there are currently 91 cadets participating in at least one extracurricular or more, making that 71% of the program in total, which is impressive. I'd like to highlight also that in each base tier, we have more than one extracurricular in each tier, which is another impressive feat that our program has accomplished. I'd also like to highlight the new STEM-based extracurricular named J-Lab that we have added to our program, which is an academic bowl consisting of cadets that participate in comp testing with academic subjects like mathematics, science, and mainly questions from the SAT and the ACT. Overall, many of our cadets in our program, the majority of them, are very involved in our extracurricular programs, and all of these programs are cadet-led, based, and run. Next, we have Cadet Captain Ona. Next, we have Cadet Captain Ona.
So as for our Curriculum in Action, or CIA, field trips, last school year, we were able to have 67 of our cadets attend a trip to New York City, where we were able to attend the Veterans Day Parade. During that, we were all able to come together as a unit and march through the streets of New York City to honor the veterans who served our country in the armed forces. And also last school year, 63 of our cadets attended a two-day overnight trip to Washington, DC, where we were all able to attend various historical locations, such as Arlington National Cemetery, Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum, and the National Mall. And as for this year, we have two trips currently being planned. For our second years and up, we have a trip to Philadelphia being planned. And for our first years, this December 11th, we have a trip to Picatinny. And also, the Philadelphia trip is in spring 2025, in case I forgot to mention. And lastly, we'll pass it back to Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Lopez with our summary.
Thank you, Cadet Captain Ona. So as you can see, we have a great year in store for us. So now, with that being said, I'd like to open the floor to any questions you may have.
I certainly have to commend the whole troop as far as getting such a high retention rate, as well as also recruiting so many members. What do you think contributed to such a skyrocketing number of students wanting to participate?
So we believe, most likely, we went, we had various extracurricular events, various recruitment events, I apologize, recruitment events last year. So we were able to showcase all the aspects our program has to offer, including all of our extracurriculars. I believe last year, we were able to come to the middle school various times. We held an assembly where we got to showcase our color guard and our raider team, as well as give, as well as a panelist of cadets ranging across all the years to answer questions that any student may have. Also, they might have been interested in any of our extracurriculars we have. I know various cadets were interested in rocketry. This year, in rocketry, we have the largest amount of cadets in that extracurricular than we've ever had in previous years. So that just shows that all the extracurriculars we have are piquing the interest of eighth graders.
I think you left one important thing. I think as young women and men, you exemplify exactly what I think other young people want to be like. I think the fact that you're so well-rounded as far as you look out for the community and really ensuring that you are bringing back so much to Mount Olive. And I think you, as individuals, also certainly contributed to the rise in, you know, recruitment. So certainly, you should thank yourselves.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the board, comments? Mr. Stansberry.
First of all, guys, you are truly a credit to this school. We appreciate everything you do. You've come a long way from when we first started with 18 or 20 cadets. Now you're up over 100 and some cadets. I think that's tremendous. I have a question for you, though. Who pays for your uniforms?
So our uniforms are funded by the Air Force Headquarters. Our junior ROTC Headquarters provides all of the uniforms, all of the aspects of the uniforms, so like our coats, our shirts, our shoes, they're all provided from the Air Force Headquarters.
Do you have any out-of-pocket money for your uniforms?
I'm not sure at this moment, Tom.
If you do, I really suggest that this board help you with that cost. We pay for uniforms for a lot of other things, band, football, whatever. And what you guys are doing is such a credit, I think the board should look into funding some of your costs.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have one comment. I just, I just have to say, you guys are wonderful, everything that they have said. But your speaking to the public is amazing. I'm really, like, most kids are very shy, and like, I'm just very, you're impressive, very impressive. So I just had to tell you that.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you guys, because you are the reflection of what the program really wants to instill in young people. I believe, I am a firm believer of the program, as all of you know. And I'm so proud of your leadership this year and years past. And it is fantastic that you are doing not one, but four recruiting events. I love it. It's because the leadership skills that is developed during this program is going to be with you for the rest of your life. And, and we at the school district, we are very proud of you and your leadership and your instructors also.
Dr. Banjia, what was it that they, you had just informed us that the ROTC had achieved? They were considered fully recognized?
They recognized as far as no longer being probation, because they had achieved the retention, as well as the volume of over 100 cadets.
And that truly is a testament to all of you. So we thank you, because that, you set it also up then for future, you know, students and groups in the ROTC to maintain that and to keep, you know, achieving that. I know Miss Perares, you're out the corner of my eye.
I just want to say real quick, thank you for all of your efforts and for your presentation here tonight for Veterans Day, and I commend all of your efforts. Thank you so much for being a role model for all of your peers.
Thank you for having us.
Anyone else? No?
You guys are amazing. We really do appreciate your advisors and what all of you guys bring to this program and to keeping it going forward, and your goal is of retention. And I see all of you with such maturity standing before us. Are all of you upperclassmen, or some of you sophomores?
Yeah, all of us are seniors, with the exception of Ona, who is a junior.
Okay. We thank you. So you've all been in the program the entire four years?
Yes.
You guys have done an amazing job. You're very impressive. We thank you, especially today on Veterans Day. It's even more special.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Stansberry has a few words to share.
Absolutely fantastic program and organization. I just wanted to acknowledge, and I think instructors were mentioned, but we wouldn't have this program if it weren't for the board's support. And standing up this program eight years ago with Chief Master Sergeant Robert Padell, if you could stand to be recognized. And, you know, we had about 70 or 80 students in that first class, and we continue to maintain 80 to 90. And this was the first year that we are over 100 and we're a viable, a viable program. Also joining us this year, Master Sergeant Nathan Krutoff. How about a big round of applause for all the work that he's done? I just wanted to acknowledge him this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, students.
Thank you.
Thank you, cadets. And with that, we will move on to the rest. We have Personnel Committee report, Ms. Aquino.
Thank you. The committee met on the 4th of November. All were present. Mr. Moore presented a proposal to the committee that will establish a district profile on the LinkedIn employee social media platform. The district is still seeking a science-certified leave replacement for Mount Olive Middle School. Dr. Banjia and Mr. Moore provided an update to the committee regarding the guidelines for a sick leave bank for district employees. Moms and Mount Olive High School, after-school clubs and activities were discussed by the committee. Mrs. Shonin shared with the committee several adjustments that were being made within the business office. The committee approved a stipend for secretarial coverage in the Buildings and Grounds Department. Dr. Banjia, Mr. Moore, and Ms. Shonin all shared information regarding the EMO tuition reimbursement agreement with the committee. Graduate credit reimbursement requests made this fall have rapidly approached the $300,000 threshold set forth in the contract. Standing topics were shared with the committee by Mr. Moore and Dr. Banjia. These topics normally include the current status of open positions in the district, any exit interviews and surveys, and any employee-related issues that need to be shared with the committee. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to curriculum and instruction and technology, and that is Ms. Bitten.
Thank you. So we met November 5th. All were present. We started out talking about the amendment to the 24-25 calendar. We proposed a change to the language on the district calendar to indicate that any unused snow days will be given back during the school year and not at the end of the school year. This allows the schools to proactively plan and communicate graduation and promotion ceremonies. Our technology part, a report by Dr. Kreider reviewed technology updates, including updating elementary schools with technology for effective presentations, and also provided AI programs. ELA curriculum K through 5, Ms. McDermott explained that the current pilot curriculum, while promising, does not have the complete reading and writing units for K through 5, and does not fully meet the 2023 New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Based on the pilot team feedback, further development is needed. And we are going, before we can competently consider this curriculum for our students, therefore, the decision has been made to pause this. And we were redirected to go back to the BOE-approved curriculum. Dr. Banjia shared potential field trips for the four elementary schools to ensure equity across the district. Our professional development, Ms. McDermott shared various updates about the district's professional development opportunities. Para-professionals had their opportunities for paid collaboration time with classroom teachers and teachers after school. She also shared the positive staff feedback from the October 14th PD Day. Our dual enrollment, Ms. McDermott shared the enrollment of the courses that offer dual enrollment. The committee discussed opportunities for growth with consideration to expand articulation with CCM. The barriers to dual enrollment were also discussed, and pathways to overcome them were shared. And the goal for the district is to expand our offerings of college-level coursework to our high school students.
Do I have any questions or comments from the board? No? I actually just want to say, I appreciate the voice in that there's an understanding from the committee when they were looking over at the ELA curriculum, you know, for the, what's the best interest of our students in our district. And when we do have to pause, we do listen to them and review that consideration. I really do appreciate that. And I do appreciate the committee discussing the dual enrollment, which is a global conversation and topic, I think, nationwide, not just within New Jersey and in our own district. Anything else? Nope? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to finance and operations, Mr. Ozillo.
We also met on Tuesday the 5th. All were present. In our meeting, we discussed the central office reorganization. You'll see on the agenda this evening that we have two items pertaining to our central office staff. After a thorough audit of the positions and the office needs, we will be removing positions that are no longer relevant, combining other positions and tasks, and have updated the job descriptions and details of the current central office positions. This is an effort to ensure the central office is properly staffed for a district our size, while at the same time ensuring we're being smart with district resources. We also discussed the ongoing bus safety concerns. In October alone, 155 summonses were issued for passing stop-school buses. It's a serious safety concern. Despite the town's fines and legal action, the numbers of bus violations continue. Officer Karifi is currently in the process of developing a bus safety program to ensure the safety of our students when boarding and deboarding the buses. It will include training and other programs to educate both the public and students about bus safety. Once the plan is formalized, we look forward to having Officer Karifi share it with the board and the community. Finally, we discussed our current bus software, as our transportation department has been working with our current platform for almost two years. But it is struggling to do so as our district grows. The current software just isn't able to meet the demands of the district our size. We have thoroughly vetted a new option that will enable the district to provide parent access to tracking their child's routes and many other capabilities that our current software does not include. And that's it.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board with regards to finance? No? Okay, seeing none, we will move to policy and governance, and Ms. Melendez.
Yes, our committee met Monday, November 4th. Dr. Kreider provided the policy committee an overview of the district's artificial intelligence initiative. Dr. Kreider explained that the district has taken a staff-first approach when introducing AI, in which staff has been provided the resources, such as Magic School, to become acclimated with the use of AI. Professional development has also been provided to staff with the latest sessions being offered at our Columbus Day PD Day. In addition, a preliminary board policy has been drafted, which will be reviewed at the upcoming Artificial Intelligence Task Force meeting. Ms. Sofley attended the policy meeting as well, at the request of the Board Policy Committee, to discuss sport club teams. Ms. Sofley discussed how club sports and school-sponsored teams serve separate functions. The district expects that club sports coaches are not prioritizing their club team if they also serve as a coach for one of the school's sponsored teams. Ms. Sofley recommended that if families have an experience otherwise, their concerns should be brought to her attention. Ms. Sofley will continue to maintain data in regard to club and school-sponsored teams. Ms. Sofley emphasized that the Mount Olive Township Athletics Department serves to help support as an additional resource for facilitation pedagogy, community liaison.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board? No? Okay, thank you. And we'll move to board subcommittees and Parent Teacher Association Liaison Reports. Do we have any subcommittees or Parent Teacher Association Liaison Reports? Do we have anyone from the public? Nope? Come on over.
Hi, I'm Marla Cockcroft. I'm with the MOHS Parents Club. We haven't really been presenting at the meetings because we're a relatively new board. So for the past year, we've been kind of getting used to what we're doing. But this is our second year, and so I am here to tell you that we are, we just awarded our teacher grant. This had, we hadn't done this for a few years, but we just restarted that. We awarded Coach Melissa Grossenstein, Grossenstein, sorry, funding for an iPad to record and analyze the MOHS swim team to help improve their performance. Teachers and staff who joined the Parents Club before October 31st can apply for a grant. This year, we'll be going through that process later in the year. We also have been collaborating with the ROTC. There are a number of groups that we do concession stands for, including the ROTC for their recent bingo night, and that went well. And we are currently holding our membership drive. We are raising money for the senior scholarships that we offer in June. We offer between eight and 10 scholarships of varying amounts, and membership is open until February. So that's it for me.
Thank you. And how much, and how do, one, teachers and staff join in order to then apply for the grant?
There's an application process, and we'll be releasing information as we're closer to that. We set up committees for the teacher grant, separate committees for the teacher grant, and then for scholarships. And we let people know, here's the application, here's what we need from you. It's, there is, it's very defined.
And how much is it for the parents out there to become members as well? And can you also give them a little caveat about joining in order for their students to apply for the scholarships?
Yes, we would really like people to do that. I believe it's 15. It varies on whether or not you use a credit card. And we have the information on the Facebook page, but, and, but I can, we can certainly promote that information again as often as needed, because we would love people to join and come out to our meetings. We have interesting discussions.
I think it's usually right, Mr. Stansberry, in the Smores Newsletter, right, section about the parent committee? And you said it was about $15 for parents to join?
That's, yeah, and, but I may or may not be accounting for the credit card fee, so apologies, it's not in front of me.
And if they join... And if they join all four years, then their students can apply for the scholarship at the end of senior year, correct?
Correct.
And there's about eight to 10 scholarships that are given out. Any questions from the board? No? Thank you so much for that information.
Thank you.
Do we have any other parent teacher association liaison reports? No? Okay. Seeing none, oh, board president report. I had just two things I wanted to mention. One, the past week has been a rough week, I think, for our community. We've had three young men that passed away in the last week. What I do want to say, though, is it's been amazing to see the community come together and honor each of them in very individual, different ways, diversity, different cultures, and the memories that these, everyone has of each of these individuals. And the honoring of the positive things is what really stands out to me. Sadly, it takes something like that for a community to come together. And then in addition, today is Veterans Day. So, I do want to say, while we say Happy Veterans Day is the term, I want to recognize that Veterans Day is for everyone that serves, that comes home and doesn't come home, for those who serve here and abroad, as well as recognizing the families that make major sacrifices. Growing up in a, you know, a Navy home, you know that those sacrifices last a lifetime and lifetime of service, and that's really, we just saw these young, you know, men and women that stand before us, really, they were honoring that, and it's continuing. Actually, Mrs. O'Neill is not here this evening because she's actually at the All Veterans Honorary Dinner on behalf of the board. So, I do want to make sure that we all remember every day, you know, the sacrifices that are made for us to even be sitting up here, you know, in this practice. With that, we will move on to, before we go to public comments, I do have three resolutions to read into the record. The first one reads, whereas on November 11th, 2024, the Mount Olive Board of Ed Student Disciplinary Committee held a suspension expulsion hearing regarding pupil ID number 213597, and whereas on that date, the parent guardian of the above referenced student and the student attended the hearing. And whereas the committee, after having heard and considered all of the proofs and testimony presented, and after considering the superintendent's recommendation, recommended to the full board that the student's out-of-school suspension with home instruction be continued until such time as an alternative educational placement for the student shall be identified, and arrangements for the student to attend such alternative educational institution shall be made. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board approves the above recommendations of the Student Disciplinary Committee, and be it further resolved that written notice of the board's decision and the family's right to appeal, same, shall be served upon the student's parents, and be additionally resolved that henceforth, during the pendency of any appeal that may be filed, and therefore thereafter, the student is barred from entering any board facility, building, or property for any purpose without prior written permission from the superintendent or their designee. Be it finally resolved that the board hereby authorizes the administration to take any measures necessary to effectuate the terms of this resolution. And the second one reads, whereas on November 11th, 2024, the Mount Olive Board of Education's Student Disciplinary Committee held a suspension expulsion hearing regarding pupil ID number 213251, and whereas on that date, the parent guardian of the above referenced student and the student attended the hearing. And whereas the committee, after having heard and considered all of the proofs and testimony presented, and after considering the superintendent's recommendation, recommended to the full board that the student's out-of-school suspension with home instruction be continued until such time as an alternative educational placement for the student shall be identified, and arrangements for the student to attend such alternative educational institution shall be made. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board approves the above recommendations of the Student Disciplinary Committee. Be it further resolved that written notice of the board's decision and the family's right to appeal, same, shall be served upon the student's parents, and be it additionally resolved that henceforth, during the pendency of any appeal that may be filed, and thereafter, the student is barred from entering any board facility, building, or property for any purpose without prior written permission from the superintendent or their designee. Be it finally resolved that the board hereby authorizes the administration to take any measures necessary to factuate the terms of this resolution. And the third and final, whereas on November 11th, 2024, the Mount Olive Board of Education's Student Disciplinary Committee held a suspension expulsion hearing regarding pupil ID number 65017979, and whereas on that date, the guard, parent guardian of the above referenced student and the student attended the hearing. And whereas the committee, after having heard and considered all of the proofs and testimony presented, and after considering the superintendent's recommendation, recommended to the full board that the parent's out-of-school suspension with home instruction pending an evaluation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board approves the above recommendations and the Student Disciplinary Committee. Be it further resolved that written notice of the board's decision and the family's right to appeal shall be served upon the student's parents, and be additionally resolved that henceforth, during the pendency of an appeal that may be filed, and thereafter, the student is barred from entering any board facility, building, or property for any purpose without prior written permission from the superintendent or designee. Be it finally resolved that the board hereby authorizes the administration to take any measures necessary to factuate the terms of this resolution. And these will go into, which section?
Administration.
Personnel action, or?
Administration.
So, it should be 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6. 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6. So, those items will go under administrative action items, 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6. Now, back to the rest of the meeting. We are on to public comments on action items. Members of that community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated. Please note, this is not a time for discussion. You may ask the board a question. We will or will not respond. We will not respond to any legal actions. We will not tolerate anything regarding personnel being named or students being named, and we will not tolerate any abusive or obscene gestures, language, or actions. The floor is open. Nope? Okay. We will move on, then. No comments? So, we will move on to approval of monthly expenditures and reports, 7.1 through 7.4. Can we take a motion, Ms. Figuera, for movement of 7.1 through 7.4?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.4.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? No, seeing none, we will take a roll call, then.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And we will move on to personnel action items, 8.1 all the way to 8.23, and that's Ms. Aquino.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 8.1 through 8.23.
Second.
And do we have any comments or questions from the board? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And we'll go on to curriculum and technology action items 9.1 through 9.5, and Ms. Fenton.
Yes. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to move action items 9.1 to 9.5.
Second.
We got Ms. Aquino came in first. And do we have any questions or comments from the board on curriculum? No? Okay. Seeing none, we will take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And we will move to finance and operations, 10.1 all the way to 10.9, and that is Mr. Orzillo.
Upon the recommendation of superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 10.1 through 10.9.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Seeing none, we will take a roll call.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And we will move to administrative action items, 11.1, and we've added the three items, so it is through 11.6. We'll go with Ms. Melendez.
Upon recommendation of the superintendent, I present a motion to approve action items 11.1 through 11.6.
Second.
Do we have questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
I'm going to abstain on 11.4 and 11.5, and yes to everything else. Okay. And we will move on to old business. Members of the board may comment on any item or topic that was previously discussed by the board. Do we have any old topics? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to new business. Members of the board may introduce any new topic or item for discussion? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none. Oh, we are down, back to public comments. And students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Please also note, this is not a discussion. You may ask the board questions or make a statement respectfully. We do not always have to respond. We will do our best to get an answer to you post-meeting as well. Anyone? Really? We're having a minute? Oh.
Fear pressure, I had to come up. Martin Wells, 25, Woodcrest, Bud Lake, New Jersey. I just want to compliment the girls gymnastics team on what a wonderful job they did. You know, a few years ago, they were begging for stuff from the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed listened, they helped them get them what they needed, and we have, was it three peats? Three times in a row?
How many home meets did they have? They have four home meets this year.
Four, all right. And that wouldn't happen without the support from the Board of Ed and giving them the resources. And I think in our district, sports is phenomenal for all, and I want to compliment the board on believing in the students and giving them the resources necessary so they can achieve their goals and their objectives. And that's it.
Anyone else? No? Okay. We are going to close the floor, then. And we're going to move to board comments. Members of the board may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. And we'll start at that end. Mr. Orzillo?
I kind of have a question that was brought to me from the public. I guess communication went out about social media and all this other stuff. So, the question really is, and it doesn't have to be answered now, obviously, if we get something out to the public, about what hate, what hate speech is, like a definition from the Board of Ed. That's the questions I'm being asked.
What is considered?
Like, well, yeah, so what, what is the Board of Ed's or the administration's guidelines on hate speech?
I can say right now that it's any derogatory terminology that's targeted to any specific group based upon a classifying characteristic. Is that?
That's just questions I'm being asked to ask.
Yeah, I think maybe.
Exactly. It is. By definition, I can go home now? Okay?
There you go. Nice with that.
Any other? Anything else, Mr. Orzillo?
Oh, just congrats to the gymnastics team, obviously, and ROTC, outstanding.
And Ms. Melendez? We'll keep it going down.
Yes, I would like to congratulate the gymnastics team for won the NJ States, and also wishing good luck to their Air Force ROTC. They are come, they are going into drill competition this weekend, so we wish them the best.
We have Ms. Aquino.
Same to my previous board members, and also I want to say thank you and best wishes in your retirement to Mrs. McCleary, who is a staple at Sand Shore, and Ms. Vargo, and thank you again to Ms. Bello for stepping into helping us with our, her new VP position for a week until we have our new person begin. Thank you.
Ms. Fenton, we'll just keep on going.
Ditto to everything they said. I think you said that gymnastics made states, right? First time in a long time, right? So, that's.
One states, right?
One states, yes. One states. And Lisa, did you say volleyball also? Did they get a congratulations?
Volleyball was going into quarterfinals and field hockey.
Volleyball and field hockey.
Oh, and field hockey. Oh, they didn't.
Semis, right?
Field hockey just lost in semifinals, football also in semifinals.
Well, congratulations to all of them for their achievements, anyway. But, and I want to thank the JROTC, I'm very proud of them, and I want to say Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans.
Thank you. We'll just keep on going. Mr. Strelachi?
Yeah, just come and see the play, the prom, 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
And Ms. Figuera?
I share the same sentiments about our gymnastics team. Way to go on your big win, and thanks again to our cadets for joining us and presenting this evening. All right. I guess I'm going to wrap it up. So many, so many achievements. Congrats to gymnastics, field hockey, volleyball, football. Girls soccer also won the sportsmanship award, I believe, for the conference. While we say that maybe some of our teams have lost in the semifinals, I think they've earned quite a bit between making it to semifinals and working really hard in a really tough division, but also the lessons that they learn with those losses and to overcome. Looking forward to seeing the prom show. What I also wanted to share is we have an eighth grader, Caitlin Molina, who is actually in the player pool for the U.S. National U-15 team. She has made it to the second round. She will be going on potentially, we find out, to the U.S. Mini Camp. It is down to about 80 girls, so she's only in eighth grade, so it is quite an honor to be recognized in that aspect, and everyone have a great, great holiday coming up, and Happy Veterans Day. Did I miss anything? There's so much going on in our district. We're going into the winter, you know, activities. Anything else?
Dr. Banjia?
All right.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And do we, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are done.
Thank you.